Welcome to the January ninth, 2024 City Council Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the agenda overview.
Absolutely. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, first off, Happy New Year. It's our first new, first meeting in the new year, 2024. Very, very excited for it. If you haven't noticed, we have some changes to chambers, some new equipment that we're excited for. There's a lectern on its way, but as with anything, there's supply chain kind of pauses and things that by next meeting, we'll have something new here as well. So just really excited about what we have. Before you today on your work session, a couple of different items. One is the property toolkit update. You'll remember or recall in your fiscal budget cycle, we talk through kind of areas of our city that need a bit more investment as far as code enforcement and/or where we have blighted properties. Some of those have been, we call them the presidential streets that are not so presidential, and we've audited those and through our Neighborhoods Program have actually walked many of the neighborhoods that we have. And so our Community Development Department will kind of engage you on some of the efforts that they have done and that where they've been successful and maybe some of the changes that we hope to see in 2024. Next up, through our Economic Development Tourism Update, Ms. Marjette Upsher is going to engage us about some of the successes that we have had in our city in the last year, not the least of which was the announcement with Framatone and the governor about the investment they're making. And there's many other impactful things. She'll give you some of the tenants that we have here, who we are, how old we are, and some of the areas of growth that we see. Some of those we know are in hospitality, some of those are in the medical field, and where we need to go, where we need to be kind of, what is it? Gretzky, and I'm sorry for the sports allusion, Gretzky said he never played to the puck, he played to where it was going, and I think that's something I would possibly offer our City Council in 2024 is we should not play to the puck, we should play to where it's going. So, and then under, after Ms. Upsher, we have Ashley Kirchner, who is our CEO of DLA, and she'll talk to you about some of the successes through DLA that we have had as far as grants that we've received that have helped populate many of our storefronts that you see downtown, some successes. We had, she would give you kind of averages of what we've seen as far as vacancies. We've seen some growth, some new openings, some openings that are pending, and then also really encouraging numbers that we've gotten from the Bluff Walk. If you haven't been down there, I think it's by mid-January that we're unfortunately going to take the lights down. I think we've seen a tremendous amount of interest and/or visitation by folks. You'll see some numbers in her presentation and something that sticks out, and I'm going to get the number wrong, and maybe Greg can keep me honest, but Water Dog, I think, saw in that period of time, I think, an increase of 150 some odd percent.
Ninety-five percent.
Ninety, 195%.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five percent, sorry, I'm going over, I'm going all in. So just some encouraging numbers from the investment the council made together with DLA about an impactful opportunity that has really encouraged people to visit our city here in Lynchburg. We have a business item briefing, also a closed session item. And Madam Mayor, before I turn it back to you, one of the things that I've begun to kind of incorporate started late last calendar year, and then this year is what's called a pop-up, and that's a brief way in which that city staff can engage you about a topic in a very short, concise way. Tomorrow begins the General Assembly, and I thought I'd have Mercedes Braun engage you about that.
Hi, good evening. Oh, no, we're in the afternoon still. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. The action is really picking up pace in Richmond. On December 20th, our governor announced, unveiled his proposed budget for 2025 to 2027 biannual, biannual budget. This is actually his first budget, so it's exciting. Like the manager said, 2024 General Assembly opening day is tomorrow, sports referencing over here, and we are excited about everything this has to offer. Over the next few months, I will be back and forth to Richmond, working with our legislators, and periodically I'll be sending you updates just to ensure that you're aware of everything happening with the budget, with bills, and of course, anything that's of interest to the city. During this time, if you have any questions, or even now, I'm happy to answer anything you've got, feel free to send me your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right.
Madam Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to our work session agenda items, starting with our property toolkit update, Mr. Kevin Henry.
I have the right button. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I want to share with you this afternoon some of the work that the Community Development Department has been doing over the past two years, and some of the work that lies ahead for us, in particular, the Code Compliance Division within our department. We refer to these resources as our Property Toolkit. You might hear it interchange with Housing Toolkit. It's not really an official name, but that's what we're going with for now. So the elements of the Property Toolkit, programs that are involved here, which are covered under the Code Compliance Division there, property maintenance, which you may know as, you know, junk, trash, tall grass, housing repairs that need to take place. The rental inspection program is a proactive inspection program that started in the early 90s in the city that seeks out a particular area of the city that these rental inspections fall in. It's no coincidence that these areas are predominantly rental, and they are the oldest housing stock within the city. So yeah, proactive inspections that are taking place there. Vacant Housing Program started in 2017, and that particular program is in place to get properties into a productive state. It levies a $100 fine for a property that is a building that's sitting vacant for longer than 12 months and doesn't have utilities connected to it. The Derelict Housing Program, similar in nature to the Vacant Housing Program in that the purpose is to get it into a productive state, although enforcement on it is a little stricter. So it is a $500 a month fine for property owners that refuse to comply and are kind of lagging in their repairs or renovations to the property. And then finally, their last is demolition. It's sort of last resort, but we do use it, and it's used in those instances where the the house has become really a hazard to the neighborhood, to the community, and we opt for that. Second on the list there, tax delinquent sales. We've taken an active role in that in the Community Development Department that's in partnership with City Attorney's Office and Billings and Collections. And then three, the Housing Trust Fund, which is not yet established, but it can be used to supplement some of the funding that we see here in some of these items here, whether it be repairs or new construction, it can go towards affordable housing as well. I can go into a few more examples a little bit later on. This map that you see on the screen here before you is the concentration of condemned buildings in the city. It goes hand in hand with, as I mentioned, the oldest housing stock in the city is where this is located. Some of the figures from the program. We started two years ago, a pilot program, and that included 17 different properties, blighted properties. And over this two-year period of time, 12 buildings were demolished, and you can see there on the top, on the table there to the right, city-funded were only six out of those 17, which is a good thing. You know, we pushed on people, you know, and threatened demolition, ultimately ended up having to demolish six of them. And really where we want to be at is the next three categories in that table of where they're, they're either privately funded demolitions, or that last category, renovate, that the house doesn't have to be taken down, that it actually gets taken care of and repaired. We, I wanted to point out too, in years past, our typical numbers for each year might have been zero, maybe one, but City Council had funded over the past two years an increase in order for us to be able to demolish properties. So we feel like this has been a vast improvement from what we've been able to do in the past. I'm going to go through some examples now of some of these various things that I've been discussing. So here is a demolition one that you can see previous photos of the property there, the house conditions there in 2022. This is in White Rock, 2109 Tulip Street. You can see final product there too, on the right. House has been, has been removed. This is adjacent to a park in the, in the city. And so, you know, how would you like to be at a park that has this, that picture there you see from like December 7th, 2022? Not really aesthetically pleasing, you know, to enjoy the park there, but the success is that, you know, that house has been taken down, plan is to include a portion of that property as part of the park. This is an example of rehabilitation that was sold. This is 2701 Lorraine Street. It's a really good story. Despite how it started, doesn't look so good there. If you see all the way on the left, significant fire damage took place. The property was purchased by a contractor for $5,000, and you can see there was some progress over the couple of years' time, and end product there, June of 2023. And, you know, there was different sort of phases of how this took place. As I said, contractor bought it for $5,000. They sold that house in 2023 for $225,000.
Wow.
At 2701 Lorraine Street. That owner, who now owns it, has a roommate that he rents to that helps pay the mortgage. So we've kind of went full circle on this one. We went from, you know, a house that's in really terrible state to an investment property for somebody that worked on it for a couple of years, was able to turn it over to a new resident that's now affordable for them, given that they have a roommate. We've also taken targeted approaches. You saw one of them before with the park on Tulip Street. We've also looked at areas near our city schools. How would you like it if you were dropping off your kid or your child was walking to school and they had to walk past condemned properties, properties that are falling apart? This particular one I share with you here is near Payne Elementary. There was actually two properties on this actual block, on the 1300 block of Fillmore Street, and we specifically focus on those areas that we feel like are a huge detriment to the community when the properties look like this. And so both, in the other instance, the building was demolished, this particular one, they This is a new construction example. This is out on Concord Turnpike. The photo on the left actually doesn't do it justice. There is significant fire damage on that property and was condemned and needed to be taken down. The new property owner took the house down. You can see under construction is brand-new house. There's actually enough land there on the property that they're going to be planning on building an additional two houses adjacent to this current house that's almost complete. This is an example from our Derelict Program. The three photos that you see there on the left, you can see a house that's in a really sad state, really poor condition, and those photos are from over the summer, so not that long ago. These aren't ancient photos or anything like that. And, you know, even that photo on the top left, you just see the condition of the interior of the house. There's a hole in the, hole in the ceiling there that you can see on the top left. When the property owner found out that they were being entered into the Derelict Housing Program, as I mentioned, $500 fine per month, they were upset. They were pretty upset. They were mentioning that they were going to come to you all and address it with you all, and kind of just staff member that talked to them just said, let's take a step back. What, you know, what's going on here? And, you know, they said, how can you do this to us? This is a family heirloom. This is our home place. Brother and sister lived here and grew up. It's been in the family for a very long time. And the staff person that was talking to them just said, you see these photos? Is this something that you really are taking pride in? And light bulb went off for them. And within three hours of that phone call with staff, the property was under contract. And you see that product there on the right is finished product over the past six months. So yeah, just even putting that pressure, I don't believe we had to levy any fines on that particular one, that they actually got the point after that and moved along. So current progress to date, you know, as I mentioned, we're, you know, we're really starting to address blight now, the past two years. It feels like, you know, we're headed in the right direction, as I said. It feels like it's really moving along now. We're do, we, with the current funding, we can do about three to four city-funded demolitions per year. We're creating productive residential properties too. That's, this is, you've heard me say it over and over again, whether it's the Vacant Housing Program, that Derelict Housing Program, we're just trying to move these properties into something productive instead of sitting there vacant. We're actively seeking more tax delinquent sales. This is when properties are in tax arrears. And we'd like to target additional buildings per year as we kind of get a feel for this as well. We want to, you know, keep pushing it. You saw that map, there's, you know, approximately 300 condemned properties, you know, within the city. And finally, our goals, in order to fulfill that housing or property toolkit completely, I just mentioned it, 300 condemned buildings. We want to sort of push the envelope and see what more we can do. A few a year is more than in previous years, but in order to make a dent, you know, really into the concentration that's going on, it's going to require additional funding, additional staffing, you know, some more resources in order to really take on this stuff. The Housing Trust Fund, as I mentioned, can supplement some of these improvements or resources. It can, you know, fund blight removal by creating, you know, affordable housing, as I talked about, the example on Lorraine Street. Some examples from other localities that they've used the Housing Trust Fund for, it can go towards new construction, it can go towards rehabilitation. The New River Valley, I know, is putting an emphasis on pre-development costs that you can apply for funding for, say, like an engineer or an architect or something like that at the front end of a project, assuming that on the back end, project will have affordable So we are very grateful at this point in time that we are for the funding that council has given us to this point, and we feel like, as I said before, we're really pushing it and we feel like we're hitting our stride and moving into things and are grateful for that opportunity to do this. It really does feel like something different that we're doing. I'd hope that you'd see the benefit from this pilot program that we've done over the past two years and from increasing resources to address the blight and if there's increases in staff needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Wilder?
Yes. Thank you for the information, it's really appreciated. Any questions? In reference to the Housing Trust Fund, has that started yet? And are we waiting for our funding? For us to allocate funding for that?
So we proposed it last year, and we worked with, I think it's called the Housing, what is it, Collaborative? With different partners and coming from, an opinion from that group was to put together a Housing Trust Fund. And we've proposed it to you and your peers as an element or aspect, another tool in the Housing Toolkit, if you will, and councils discussed it, and we haven't put forth the resources, but we were explaining there are ways in which that you concede a trust fund and then solicit and/or encourage private interest in it to help grow it, and then work with a partner, whether an outside partner or internal, to see whether or not we can focus on some of the things he said. But currently, there is, there are $0 that are attributed to, or kind of assigned to a Housing Trust Fund.
And is there ever any like governmental funds for a program of that nature, or is that totally private and public funds?
I'm not aware of any. Usually, the funds that are then associated are usually through a housing authority that you can leverage or use that as an outside aid, or you, or internally, you put together a guild of developers that hopefully someone out, third party, would kind of help marshal as far as what we were, you know, talking about as an interest or, you said, New River Valley that looked at, usually they decide whether or not, what kind of construction, what kind of rehabilitation, what kind of demolition, and focus on that to create the dent that he was explaining.
And I notice again, it's always unfortunate, the majority of those are in War II, so we continue to have those tools in our toolkit that we can revitalize that particular area, especially all the blacks that's in that particular War II area. How do we advertise this information to our members of our community?
I don't know if we're specifically advertising it, that this is going on. Certainly, the properties that are affected are finding out about it. We do, we do discuss sort of informally with realtors and people that we know that are in the, you know, real estate and construction and development, hey, there's, you know, properties out there, and this is new things that the city are doing, so that they're ready to go if a property becomes available, but I don't think we're actively advertising, at least that I'm aware of.
Now, Dr. Wilder, you know that we've been doing some neighborhood planning work in Diamond Hill, and in that case, we've been going door to door and making sure residents know, because we were really relying on the community to kind of point out when structures are starting to go declining, so we can get them on that list and keep that in mind.
And one of the other concerns is that for persons who might not have the financial capital to renovate a house, who might live in like Diamond Hill or White Rock or whatever, who doesn't have that, because that takes quite a bit of capital to do that, how do we direct them or redirect them into some resources for that? Do we have any kind of assistance for that or direction for that?
We do. There's a variety of options for them. I mean, they can, the housing authority was mentioned before, that they have programs that are available. Certainly, the Housing Trust Fund would be an available source for them. Yeah, and it just depends too. Sometimes we can tie them up with, you know, somebody that's familiar with that type of repair, or does that kind of work on the house? Just depends on the circumstance.
Okay. All right. If I may, Dr. Wilder, I think it's very important to separate the different cases. You know, the property maintenance, our goal has always been to keep people in their homes, right? And that will always be our goal as we move forward. The property maintenance is one thing, and there's various programs out there that we try and, you know, refer people to, to help them make the repairs if needed. The structures that we're primarily talking with you about today are those that are vacant or derelict, they're condemned, they're falling in. And quite frankly, you know, it's kind of like that car that you might keep, people might keep in their backyard, I'm going to get around to repairing it, but they don't. So really, what these programs are doing is encouraging people to move properties where they become more productive.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? No? I do have questions. So the, the staff that you were referring to, I know that when we were talking last year going into this current year budget, the request was for inspectors. Is it still specifically inspectors, or there are additional positions that you're still looking at adding aside of inspectors?
I'm sorry, thank you so much. So the current request would be for a, an additional building inspector, because what we're seeing is not only is a lot of these programs creating rehabilitations, which creates more inspections, they're also creating new construction. And as we create these vacant lots, it's creating opportunities for more infill.
Okay, so what's the cost? What would be the cost for that if we're considering going into this, the 25 this year?
I can get you the exact cost, but actually, what we're proposing, if I may, is we're proposing to take a part-time position and add .25 position to it. So I don't have the exact dollar amount right now, but it's fairly...
I'm interested in seeing that number, and then also the request for three to four properties a year for demolition, is that what your hope is, or is that what the average is, or are we hoping for more? I just kind of want to get real numbers here that we're...
So fiscal year '23, council increased that funding to $100,000.
Right.
What's important to know, as with everything, demolition costs have gone up, and a lot of it is contingent upon the type of structure, whether or not it has asbestos and if we have to deal with that. So with the current funding of $100,000, we're able to do three to four, it's really closer to three per year. One of the requests that we proposed this year was to increase that funding, because really what the programs and the funding allow us to do is to leverage these dollars to get people to actually move the property, either demolish it themselves or to sell it to someone who will actually rehab it. You know, it'd be very nice if we didn't have to use any of that money, but unfortunately, some of these structures are so bad, and some people just will not do anything with them. The city does have to step in and take care of it.
So three to four a year, is this because of affordability, really, is because of the budget that we allow?
Absolutely. And last year, so last year, council was gracious enough to approve a position for our Derelict Program, which is going to help us increase over the 17. So as Mr. Henry referenced, there's over 300 condemned properties, and that list currently revolves, some come off, more come on, but the goal is to have, that person will concentrate primarily on the Derelict Program to help increase, you know, create outcomes like this. We were a little behind this year because we were having difficulty hiring, as we've seen throughout the workforce, but we have someone on board now, getting them trained up, and they're doing and will continue to do great work.
So we have 300 condemned buildings, which are in such, obviously, in that state that are safety hazards, that are sitting...
They're in various states.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I believe, I'm sorry, I have so many questions, so I just want to make sure I'm clear on everything. When we had the retreat, I know there was, one of our boards had a proposal of an amount, what was that request, do you recall?
It was, and that was a mixture of property acquisition, demolition, and also opportunity demolition was the third. That was strategic acquisition, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Oh, I did want to let you know, Mr. Henry, that, I don't know if you were aware, but the property on Tulip Street, our very own Councilman Taylor was responsible for clearing that and putting up that playground. So I would like to applaud him for doing that. Yes, you did, didn't you?
We may have known that, yes.
Well, it was, he led the charge on it, so it just shows that we have community members that are invested in helping our community, and I appreciate that you led the charge on that, so. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Madam Mayor, before I...
Yes.
Before Ms. Upsher comes forward, I do want to say, and Mr. Henry had said it as well, thank you. Part of what you're seeing is what I understood to be the expected purpose, which is to pilot a program, to give you kind of insight into, if we were to make this kind of investment, what kind of returns we could see, because Dr. Wilder, I would say that Kent has met with both commercial and also residential developers at the end of last calendar year, I want to remember that right, or start of last calendar year. And I'll say, just by anecdote, word has gotten out where I think we had let things sit fallow because of resources and other, that we're making the strides we are, I think it's being known by the community, and so now people are understanding the city's going to follow up. So I just want to take one more opportunity, like city staff has said, to say thank you for making the investments that you have.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Economic Development and Tourism Update, Ms. Marjette Upsher.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update from the Office of Economic Development and Tourism. I am here today to share the success of our business community and to thank each and every one of you for supporting the roles that we play to assist them. So I'm kind of, kind of, kind of go over and orient us to the fact that, and I'm sure you hear the city manager sings this from the rooftop, but we are a young, diverse, and growing community. We have over 79,000 residents, as you know, and that has grown approximately 5% between 2010 and 2020. We have a median age of 28.5, and that, that's compared to the national average of 38.1. With our five colleges and universities, 30,000 students graduate from the city's colleges and universities annually. We are working to retain these college graduates. And so one of the things that you look at, a lot of times when you're looking at census data, is... data, is the labor participation rate. And for us, the labor participation rate, you look at when people start to work, and sometimes it can be between 18 and 25, when that's when a lot of our college students are here and they may not be working. Or the main labor participation range is between 25 and 54. So I want you to know, as you look at the census data on that, sometimes when we collectively go from 18 to 54, we look like we're somewhere around 55, 59, somewhere there, but between 25 and 54, our labor participation rate is 83%. So that is very good, and it has grown 3% over the last three years. 37% of our residents are people of color, and 4% are foreign-born, and I'm just throwing some little caveats out here, some little questions out here. Did you know? And I'm doing that because I know every one of you on council is an ambassador for this city, and that's what we're looking for, is we're looking for people that can tell people what a great place this is. So did you know that the cost of living in Lynchburg is 10% lower than the national average? We're 10% lower than the state and 10 and some change lower than the national average. Our wages have continued to rise here, and they rose 5.5% in 2023. So the city's three largest employment sectors are healthcare and social assistance. These are sectors, as they are defined in the economic verbiage, educational services and manufacturing. We have a large footprint in manufacturing. So manufacturing is the highest of our GDP. It's, and in the city of Lynchburg, manufacturing is 22% higher than it is in the national average for municipalities. So our site development initiatives, which we are so grateful that you all have supported, are focused on attracting advanced manufacturing prospects, and that is what we have seen over the last year. So of these sectors, education and healthcare are both growing. Those sectors are growing. And if anyone was at the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, when the Chamira Economist and Chamira is who we all use in the region for a lot of our statistics, they were talking about that the manufacturing sector is not in the lane to grow as we're moving forward. So what you want to do there is you always want to look at, how do we diversify? And so hopefully, you'll hear our tourism products and some of the other things we're doing is how we look at making sure that we have a strong and vital economy. So we call our Eds and Meds, we call Lynchburg a city of Eds and Meds, and we also call them our anchors, because they are probably not going to pick up and move in the middle of the night because they found another location to go to. And they are also really, really involved in wanting Lynchburg to be a great place, because if the city of Lynchburg doesn't thrive, then those colleges, universities, and the healthcare system, they can't do the work that they want to do. So we are trying to strengthen our partnerships with them. And think about it, as we talk about what the economy here looks like, we are still, with those colleges and universities, they contribute to the growth of our hospitality and tourism sectors because we are still, and I will have us remain, the central entertainment, visitor, and employment hub. So those colleges and universities drive a tourism market for us that is unparalleled. You'll hear some statistics in a few minutes that'll blow your mind, but educational services, to put it in perspective, in the city are seven times more than the US. Manufacturing's 22, education is seven, and healthcare is three times. So we're driving investment in the city. With your support, our collective focus in the Office of Economic Development and Tourism is to lead business retention, expansion, and attraction efforts, and that includes marketing and promoting the city of Lynchburg as a destination for investments by businesses and visitors. So you all participated with us, and I thank you so much for Delta Star's announcement this year to invest $30.2 million. They will do that by revamping their building there and adding an additional 80,000 square feet. They are going to retain 460 jobs and add another 149, create another 149 jobs over the next three years. The annual salary for that is over $67,000. So my did you know there is that Delta Star's headquarters is in the city of Lynchburg. Framatome, thank you once again, is going to invest $49.4 million and create 515 new jobs with an average salary of $105,000. This is a transformational announcement. Both of these announcements were working with City Council, the Economic Development Authority, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and very closely with the Governor's Office. So this has been a banner year, and boy, did I need it with this young man right here beside me. So my did you know there is that the city of Lynchburg is Framatome's North American headquarters and is one of the city's largest employers with over 1,300 employees, and we are working alongside them, which is quite a gift, as they move into a huge hiring process like that, so that we can walk along beside them. And just like Kevin is talking about, housing and blighted properties and all those things, when you're hiring that many people into your municipality, they're looking to us to look at everything: recreation, amenities, what, you know, how's the school system? How is absolutely everything? So we will be getting that feedback from them, what's working, what's not. Through our business support programs, I'll designate two here. The Enterprise Zone is a state-supported program, and we administer it. We're very fortunate in Lynchburg to have two Enterprise Zones. We were the second Enterprise Zone in the state of Virginia, and we have those zones, and we have really worked those zones. Our zone number two, we have probably had for over 50 years. So this is where, it's a grant program for job creation as well as real property improvement. It's in specific geographic areas, but we do one heck of a job marketing it, back to the mayor's questions, or Councilmember Wilder's questions about, how do you market this? We market it constantly. As a matter of fact, we just recently pulled all the finalized permits for 2023, and we will contact each one of those people personally to let them know that they may be eligible for that grant. But to let you know, the local redevelopment grant, which is handled internally and that you all support, and the Enterprise Zone, over the last year, we supported 13 local businesses, who created 245 new jobs and received over $600,000 for over $9 million in capex investment. We also just were told that we filled out our application, and we have been awarded a continuance of Enterprise Zone number two. So we are really, really happy about that because we have used that tool to the max. My did you know here is between Framatome, Delta Star, and those business support programs, our office has directly supported the creation of 909 new jobs. So with your help again, we are readying new sites for future development. So in fiscal year '21 and '22, we did master plans for the Airport Commerce Park and Ivy Creek Industrial Park. This enabled us to move forward and apply for Virginia Business Ready Sites Program Grant and a Gil of Virginia Grant. We received over $450,000 in order to do due diligence on both of those parks, which will give us greenfield sites to be able to market. The due diligence will be completed in June, and that will allow us to move forward with utilities and site access. So in CIP, we have these parks in CIP, and what we are trying to do is get those parks closer to a pad-ready designation. But we have done some things in the interim that allows us to market those even now, and we have gotten increased interest since all of that has been done. We've had the ability to, with LRBA, when they're out marketing and for the marketing that we do, everything that we do in marketing, all the visitor, all the tourism, all of that, is also marketing to those people that have a company and are looking for somewhere to land. The other thing to give kudos to the private sector is 174 million in commercial construction permits were issued in 2023. Kudos to community development and 10% increase over 2022, moving in the right direction. So I want to show you now, if I can, the EDA owns two industrial parks, Lynchburg Center for Industry, which is where Bosch &amp; Lam is, and where Automated Conveyor Systems is and all of that. We have one site left there, a five-acre site privately owned. We have the Master Brand Building, which was vacated. It is under contract, fingers crossed, with a prospect. Ivy Creek Industrial Park, Innovation Park, we had two sites there. With this master plan and the due diligence we're doing, we'll have five sites. So I want to show you the video that we have created in order to market this property. We are making it real for people to see a simulated building on the property. That's Foxley, block over to the left-hand side, Virginia Metal Treating on the other side, and that's River's Edge Building. So, and that was done by a local person here, Jonathan Parker. He does incredible work, and he pulled that off for us. We had a prospect, and we had to turn it around really quickly, and I can't even tell you how quickly he took care of that for us. And as I said, we've had seven prospects in the last year, and that's more than we've had in a very long time. So when Megan talks about pad-ready sites and inventory, that's really important. So my did you know for this one is the definition of a pad-ready site, and that is, it has utility connections to parcel boundary road access, and has been rough graded and construction permitting documents in hand. So whether we do all the grading or we put all the paperwork in place that we require so that when we market it, they have a really short timeframe for how long it's going to take them to get the building up. And many times, that's 18 months to two years is what they look to us to say, that's where we want to be. So, next is, we're growing the workforce. Our office supported six local workforce development programs that served over 200 of our residents. These programs were partnerships with Lynchburg City Schools, Beacon of Hope, Central Virginia Community College, Framatome Nuclear Academy, Career Works, and Women in Machining. These workforce development programs were directly tied to our local industry sectors, IT, nuclear, manufacturing, tourism and hospitality, and healthcare jobs. One of the partnerships I'm really, really proud of is the photo on the right-hand side is of JobFit interns, and this is a program that is done, JobFit is a 501(c)(3) that is set up with the CloudFit organization. They have a mission to bring in interns to mentor them, so we work with them, we sponsor some of those interns there, and they offer paid internships to high school, college students, and career changers. And they allow the, they give them real projects to work on, they have real community service every year. When I go to watch the graduation, because it reminds you of why you do what you do every day, I'm over at Jubilee when they're, when they've been over there working with the students over there. So they really are a service-oriented organization, and they have hired, they've had 16 of those interns that have come through that program have been hired by CloudFit, including four of the most recent graduates in 2023. But some of the others have gone on to work for Microsoft and places like Space Force. So what we're looking to do this year is to bring the rest of our large employers in to see what JobFit is doing, because everybody needs IT folks, and that's what CloudFit wants to do, is they can't hire everybody, but they would love to work with the other employers here. So that, that to me is an unbelievable story. We're also partnering with Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance on their roadmap, their workforce roadmap. So the more of us that can come together and make sure that gets implemented, I think the more, the more effective we're going to be, the more we're going to help get our citizens employed. So my did you know on that one is currently, we have 3,495 full-time jobs in the region that are open, last time I checked. Okay, so Lynchburg Loves You brand. So we work with local companies. After the COVID-19 happened, I went to all the local companies or a group of them and said, "What can I do to help you?" And they said, "Help me sell the city. Help me bring talent here. Help me tell people, tell the story of why Lynchburg is a great place." So this brand has helped us do that. So we work with local companies on talent attraction through our website, lyhlovesyou.com. It serves as talent attraction. We have a whole relocation portion of that, so people can see what it's like to live here, how to get connected here, jobs, the local schools, lifestyles, all of that. We have a whole blog on how to get connected in the community. And what does talent now want? They want economic opportunity, the urban lifestyle, amenities, and a welcoming culture. And investors go to great places with deep talent pools. So we also, as I spoke to you all about being ambassadors, we go out to the businesses and select employees or have them give us employees that are ambassadors. So we have authentic Lynchburg-employed folks that are in our videos that talk about why they love working and living here. We can use those videos to talk about how great it is to be here, but they can also use that video. So I have a little video here, won't play the whole thing. Emlyn, thank you so much. This is an actual employee at Framatome.
Hi, I'm Jackie Stevens. I'm an engineering manager at Framatome headquartered in Lynchburg, Virginia. I've been with Framatome for almost 15 years now. One of our driving principles is clean energy, is a focus on the environment. Framatome and our teams, and we're all pulling for something. We all believe in nuclear energy, this just really powerful, incredible thing to solve a lot of the world's problems. And you see that, you feel that every single day in the office. Being a woman in engineering, trying to represent... Being a woman in engineering, trying to represent my teams, represent some of the more diverse populations of our engineering workforce. It's incredibly rewarding, but also can be very challenging because eyes are on you. I'm a mom, I've got two children. Life can be really messy for all of us in different ways at different times. You really just embrace the flexibility so that you're able to show up for your family, for your life, even when you need to. And of course balancing that when we need you in the office, we need you here 100%. I love living in Lynchburg. It's really grown up, you know, there's a lot to do. Arts, entertainment, incredible restaurants, and raising a family here. It just works so well. It's home.
So we are promoting and improving our community. So it was a record year for tourism impact. Tourism is big business, like I said, balancing, you know, from an economic development standpoint. It drives spending in food and beverage, lodging, transportation, retail, and recreation. In 2022, the tourism sector here in the city supported more than 3,700 jobs and produced $25 million in state and local tax revenues. So in our office, we not only assist with all of the colleges and universities or any kind of events, we, we actually go out and sell the city to bring conferences, meetings, sports-related events back into the city. So last year, in our, we had 69 group tours, conferences, and sports-related events. It generated 63,385 visitors, 19,735 room nights, and 8.8 million in local spending. Very, very powerful. And I triple bottom line. If I do something for visitor, I'm doing it for my residents and I'm doing it for attracting the people to come to the city and invest. And my did you know here is that we are already killing it this year. We're 19% above where we were in 2022. This is a great place to be. Lynchburg named a top college town. We are really focused on strengthening our relationship with those anchors. Why? I want to increase enrollment for them. I want them to attract great professors and great employees. Sports tourism helps to increase visibility and drive revenue to their campuses as well as the city. And I want to encourage the college students, I want to be connected to them, to have them stay after graduation. As I've told you before, local commencement events here brought 60,000 guests to our city and drove 17 million in economic impact. And active partnerships grow sports tourism. I just today went and visited with Ian McCall at Liberty and with John Waters at University of Lynchburg talking about how we can bring more sports tourism business to the city. So we recently partnered with LU to host Conference USA volleyball and football. And to find out what we do to assist them, we assist them with hotel room blocks for the teams, the bands, the conference staff, and media. And we advertise with LU Athletics to ensure that LYH and our brand, as we all know, Go Flames, are on the world stage. Okay, as if that weren't enough. So we also permit special events. And we had 45 special events over this year, and they're growing. So those are all something that the city can be really proud of, and we hope to have even more of those events in the future. So what's coming in 2024? My did you know here is in December of 2022, Lynchburg was proudly named the host city for the 2024 Professional Disc Golf Association Pro World Championships. That's a mouthful. This is the first time this event has been held in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we beat out a city in Finland, just so you know. Lynchburg will be on the world stage welcoming 350 athletes and estimated 20,000 spectators the week of August 19th through the 24th. This event alone is expected to bring a $6.4 million economic impact. So we're out there, we're telling the story and raising Lynchburg's profile on an international stage, I would say. And so this year alone, we were featured in, and hopefully all of you saw it, we were featured in Southern Living magazine with a six-page spread. I want to thank my entire team because they work on these things all year long. I have very talented staff, and we have incredible support from the other departments here in the city. But many of our local businesses and attractions were featured in that six-page ad. Blue Ridge Outdoors, we were named a top adventure town. Who knew? I think that's the sheer will of Emmeline Gwynne, saying everybody must vote for us for that. But we got recognition for that as a finalist. And then we were named a top college town by Travel and Leisure Magazine. So congratulations to all of you all for one heck of a year. I think we deserve it. But what's next? So what's next for us is with your continued support. We have a jobs portal. We want to get that jobs portal in the hands of more of our citizens to let them know the jobs that are available or the training that may need to be done. So we're partnering with all the points where we intersect with, with citizens. So social services, the library, parks and rec. We want to have all of those people well-trained on what that jobs portal can do for folks. Bring it down to where our citizens are. We want them to have that accessibility. We're updating our sports tourism plan. That was the roadshow I was on today, talking to all of the college presidents and their athletic directors about what we can do to support them with the events they already have and maximize that. But also what can we do to bring events that they would like to have on their campuses? We are also really anticipating the completion of the comprehensive plan because that will influence our update of our strategic plan moving forward. And we're going to continue to invest in destination marketing efforts because it drives business retention, investment, it drives talent and visitors. And with your help, we will continue our site development effort. So I just want to leave you with this little quote. "If you build a place where people want to visit, you'll build a place where people want to live. If you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people want to work. If you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where business needs to be." We're all connected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Fraldy?
Thank you for your presentation, as always, and to your staff for putting it together. Just a few short years ago, it felt like every other week there was a business closing to some degree. Whether it was 200 jobs, 400 jobs, 50 jobs, it felt like it was happening a lot. And this, you can turn and look at the presentation and feel the shift in the wind and the economy that is associated here. The ship is turning, and you can sense the momentum. I think the presentation sums it up. Hundreds of jobs, tens of millions of investment. And I'm confident there's more wins coming. So I couldn't be more excited for what you're sharing with us and the city and the region at large to show that Lynchburg is in a really great place when it comes to economic development and our local economy. To me, we're full steam ahead. I don't see us slowing down. The momentum is building. Our brightest days are ahead of us. It's clear by this presentation. I think simply put, I made the note, Lynchburg is open for business. And I commend you. So thank you.
Thank you.
还有什么问题?
Are you tracking with what's going on over at US Pipe right now?
No.
Where?
Apparently a bunch of their full-time employees have been put back to part-time. I just want to make sure you're tracking on that.
Okay.
I got a phone call today about that. Just want to make sure you're tracking on that and that we're there to support them because that's a huge employer for our region.
Absolutely. Yeah, just had a recent conversation with them, and that went far.
The employer that you mentioned?
US Pipe. Thank you.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your dedication. I would appreciate the work you and your staff and the team does, also Downtown Association, the work you do in our community. It is so vital that we make these investments. And the investments that we have made downtown in our community kind of shows it now. I mean, with the partnering with our colleges, with all our businesses, with Framatone, all that, with Flowers Bakery, all those investments we've made, it shows that they bring substantial increases to our community. And like now, working with Framatone in our school system and also the CBCC to make sure we have the right employee, right citizens to get those great higher-paying jobs, not just minimum wage jobs, but just higher-paying jobs that bring a better living wage for our citizens. So that partnership is so crucial. So I appreciate the work we're doing here at the economic development, as well as the state of Virginia, when the governor sends in resources to the Downtown Association and to other associations that help revitalize downtown empty spaces, that really persons who might have a vision, and it gives them some support, some management support, that can bring that vision to fruition. So I appreciate all the work that your group is doing, as well as Downtown Association is doing to make Lynchburg a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. I just want to, I want everybody that's listening and watching to know how hard this woman works. This is her life's passion. You can tell. And there's a lot. People don't know that she's working on all the time. And, you know, it's, it's constant in life. People will criticize, it's easy to criticize and not give enough credit. And I know that you work so hard, and there's so much going on behind the scenes that people don't realize. We know only a little bit, and we only get to know when it's time, and then we have to shush about it until we're allowed to share. So we don't even know all that you're working on, but I want all of Lynchburg to know that you are out there working day and night to bring jobs to our city. You're working with LRBA, you're working with the governor's office, you're working with Winter, you're working with people we don't even know, fighting to get jobs in our city. I know you are. So thank you for the countless hours that you spend fighting to bring jobs to our city. We, Vice Mayor is right, we have lost some, and it's been a devastation to some families. But then we're bringing some back. And I, and Lynchburg is open for business. And so we'll fight to continue to bring more. I know you are. So thank you. Thank you so much. And on behalf of all the families who, who now will have incomes because of the hard work you have done, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Downtown Lynchburg Association Report on New Businesses in 2023 and Bright Nights on the Bluff Walk. Ms. Ashley Kirchner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me. Why do I feel like I need to lean? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I don't want to lean. Thank you for having me. So I, I feel like Marjette just gave you like a whole meal, and I'm just going to give you like a little cherry on the top of the deck.
It's so beautiful.
It was, it was a good meal, though. No, seriously, though, I want to thank Marjette after that presentation. You know, I get to stand up here and talk to you about on a micro level the things that are going on in downtown, the growth in downtown, and just a couple little high points I want to share with you. But none of that work that we could do could happen without the macro level of support that her office and the rest of the city provides to the businesses, the property owners, and everything else that's going on down there. So I just want to mention that before we get into these, these two little items for you today. So there are two things I was asked to share with you today, and we're going to go through them pretty quickly. But the first is what happened with downtown businesses last year. We work specifically and track storefronts. We want to make sure that our downtown storefronts, which is a bottom-floor, front-facing parcel in downtown, are filled with working businesses. When you walk down the street, that's what you're passing. That is what you are seeing as the face of our downtown that helps you feel like whether downtown is succeeding, whether it's moving forward. And we had a great year for downtown storefronts last year. I want to just mention quickly, too, Marjette's point about businesses, attracting businesses and talent to the area. When I go meet with businesses, they tell me the exact same things they tell Marjette. But what they look at me and say also is, I need downtown to be better in order for me to attract talent to this area, right? And I know they tell her the same thing. So when we're doing this work, we have that in mind. We're thinking about how we make Lynchburg a more attractive place for people to want to live and, and do business. So real quick snapshot, last year, 16 new businesses, well, 15 new businesses opened in downtown and one expanded. That was, that's a big number for us. This is storefront businesses. We do not track upper-floor office, professional. I'd love to, but that is an on-the-ground job that we just don't have the staff for. But in terms of, you know, businesses that are actually serving the public visitors, all of that, we had 15 new ones and one expanded, which is fantastic. I just want to throw the list up here so you can see it. And specifically, you know, what's happening are a couple of good things. One, we're filling empty vacant storefronts. So an example of that, Inca Grill, that was a vacant storefront for a while. We attracted, and by we, I mean all of the efforts that you're hearing here today, create a culture that these businesses want to invest in. This is actually a state franchise. This is a second or third location, I believe. They looked at Lynchburg and they found it attractive, and here they are. So we had new businesses open and, and underutilized spaces. The Glass House was an example of that. Al Mariachi Restaurant and Cafe filled a vacancy that, I don't know the numbers on me, a long time. We're going to call it a long time. Those parcels were, were empty for a long time. So we saw a lot of really good momentum. Another good example of kind of what we're seeing happening with storefronts is, maybe it wasn't a vacant storefront, but it was a storefront that was being used in a less ideal, less-than-ideal way. A good example of that is the, I think it's 801 Church. It is catty corner from the Virginian, a black facade. On the left side, it used to be Oriental Rug Storage. They were beautiful, but it was not a storefront. You can't walk in it. On the right side, it was a YouTuber with the curtains up, just like selling things. So that was the use of this beautiful storefront. And now it is a cheese shop. And that is something the public can go in. It is amenity for the Virginians. So we're seeing a lot of those properties also turn over into things that are just more attractive. I also want to mention, too, any of the businesses that have a star by them are launch participants. So if you remember, Downtown Lynchburg Association did a launch LYH program last year. We're actually going into our second year right now. But with help from the city, from a state grant, we put out a call to entrepreneurs that were interested in starting up a business in downtown Lynchburg. I don't want to go too much into stuff that I'm going to bring to you in my annual report in five months, so just forget all of this, I'm sure you will. But we had over 100 people apply for that position. We accepted 24. They went through eight weeks of education, and in the end, we awarded seven businesses with grants to start up. I'm happy to say that two, three? Two, two have opened? Two have opened. One of those is Prima, which stands for Plants Rule Everything Around Me. That's Tia right there. So she opened in a storefront that was, the business there was closing. It would have been vacant, and we were able to put her in right away. So that's exciting. Mosaic Collective listed there as also another grant recipient of ours. So we have restaurant, we have retail service businesses that opened. And I'm excited to share, too, that on the horizon, we've got, we already know of a couple that are opening this year. Three of them are our launch grant recipients. And I'm happy to share that all three of these are going into spaces that were previously vacant. And so these are, when we're looking at our vacancy rate, when we're going to be tabulating that as we move forward as a metric of success, right? We want to lower the vacancy rate in storefronts. These are three vacancies that are going to be filled, and we're very excited about that. Easy Speak Dance Hall will have dance events and classes. That's going to be for the public. Subirad is an arcade. It's going to be family-friendly, but also adult-friendly, which I'm very into. That's going to be on Ninth Street. And Wolf Band Productions, a theater company that was based out of Appomattox, is now moving to downtown Lynchburg, and they'll be on Jefferson Street. So all of this is adding to downtown as a dining and entertainment district, which is what the master plan calls for and what we're trying to do. And so overall, 2023 was a great year for new businesses. We've got a lot of new energy. As Marjette said, a lot of permits are being pulled. We see development not slowing down, and businesses are following. So I'm happy to give you that report. And then I want to briefly go into our economic impact report for Bright Nights on the Bluff Walk. So as a quick reminder for those who maybe missed it, Bright Nights on the Bluff Walk was an eight-week installation, is, I'm sorry, it's still there. We haven't taken it down yet. We got to do that next week. Is an eight-week installation on the Bluff Walk. It was funded primarily by Downtown Lynchburg Association through a state grant, through sponsorships locally, but also the city was a partner on that. And I think it's important because when I show you the numbers on this, I want to see how, I want you to see how quickly your investment came back to you as a city. But before that installation, before we talk about the installation, we also had a festival on the day that it opened. Some of you were there. So on that night, this is the first-time event. We invited people to come down, see the lights, and participate in a big celebration of the holidays. And our estimated attendance, based on placer data, which is what all of the data I'm going to share with you is based on, was over 5,000 people. of the data I'm going to share with you is based on, was over 5,000 people. So it was a big event. It was free for the community. It was something that everyone could access, which was fantastic. And it was a great first time event. It's very clear to us, people are hungry for these events. It's very clear that people want to come down, be in the streets and just enjoy this community together, which was fantastic. So that was the opening night. The festival itself, again, eight weeks, I have data that is just from November nineteenth to December thirty first, just to make it cleaner. Every night, there have been dozens to hundreds of people flocking down to the Bluff Walk and enjoying, not just being there, I have, so I have, sometimes I have to go down there and fix the lights. Someone is down there every night and, and, and we have every night, we, we've learned some things. It turns out when you put up lights, they don't maintain themselves. So someone is down there from DLA every night, just assessing the scene. When it's me, I get to hear what people are saying because they don't know who I am. I'm just a, you know, woman walking around tugging it, you know, electrical cords. I consistently hear, I've never been on this Bluff Walk. I had no idea this restaurant was here. And so I think that what this, what this project has served to do, among many other things, is it has brought people down to both downtown and to the Bluff Walk that have never been there before. And they're discovering, in businesses, they're discovering that downtown is a place that is safe and inviting and a place that they want to be. So we're very excited about that. Looking at the numbers, you can see the change, the growth in visitation is pretty immense. So when it says location Bluff Walk, that literally means a geographic boundary has been placed around the Bluff Walk for Placer to pull the data. So in 2022, there were 2,900 visits to the Bluff Walk and in this year, excuse me, last year now, there were over 10,000. So that's a change of 259%. Even if a lot of that is accounted for in the event itself, there's still thousands of people after that that continue to come down, thousands more than in previous, than in 2022. And I think too, the unique visitors is important. There are people that are coming down a lot and I should mention too, I don't know how much Placer has been brought into council chambers before, but Placer, which is the software that uses cell phone data to track all of this, it differentiates between visitors, residents and workers. So this does not include residents and workers. This is just people that are coming down to visit downtown, which is very cool. And then we ran the same report for the Central Business District because I also wanted to see, were they already coming to downtown? And then they also just went to the Bluff Walk and they didn't do that before, but we're also seeing an increase in 17% of total visits to downtown during this time, which is pretty wild. So I wanted to also just throw this in there. Often you guys, people are interested in who is coming to these things and it's people from all over the community. It's people from primarily within the city, but then also from the counties. So you can see that they are spread widely from among our community and I find that interesting. My favorite data, however, is this slide. So I called up a lot of our major downtown restaurant owners. They, you know, they don't want to give you, this is how much money I made this year, but they will, they will give me percentages and that's what I'm happy about. First, let me mention local economic impact. So that's the local economic impact calculator that tourism uses. Remember that a year ago, you all approved in the capital improvement project budget of $50,000 investment in assets that would help this program happen. So those assets will continue to be used throughout. It wasn't a one time cost, but already you see the local economic impact because of the partnership funds that are brought to it has already come back. But individual business impact. So these numbers range from, the lowest is 26%, the highest is 95% increase in sales in the previous period in these restaurants. One of the business owners told me that essentially in a good year, between zero and five percent growth in sales is good. These numbers are insane. So that is so affirming for us because often we are doing programs that we believe are good for business. We believe that we drive traffic in there. You know, we know what we're doing is good, but to actually see the data reflect that and to hear them anecdotally say, they were coming in from this event. This event drove traffic into our business and specifically only two of them were able to pull out new customers, but just showing that we're introducing so many new people to these businesses. It helps to ensure that, you know, doing business in downtown is, is difficult. It's, it takes early adopters. It takes these people down here to say, I believe in this vision so that later everyone else can come and jump on the bandwagon, but these, these people here, they need our support and they need projects like this to help them do what they do. So we're proud of this event. We are so happy that it went this well the first year. We will continue to do it with your support, by the way. And we just want to thank you so much for your initial investment in what turned out to be a successful project. Thank you.
I have a problem with you, Ashley. Every time I think you cannot do yourself, DLA steps up with your, with your leadership and outdoes what was previously done. I think the best compliment I heard was actually from a coworker, wasn't pushed for, it was simply said, quote, it was the night of the, the festival, quote, "This feels like a Hallmark movie." And I'm like, that's Lynchburg. Proof is in the pudding, proof's in the data. I, I was absolutely blown away at the notion of a 95% increase in sales at Water Dog. I mean, I can only imagine what kind of an impact that makes. This is incredible and I really hope we can double it in some capacity next year. I have a vision of Bank of the James has Christmas lights on it. I mean, like if downtown can have lights, downtown has the lights. I remember actually a conversation over on, it may have been when we took a walk on Percival's Island and sat at a bench when you first came, came to the city, Winter. And it may have been there where you said something to the effect of like, you know, I'd love to see Lynchburg have Christmas lights all over the buildings downtown. I'm not saying this was necessarily, you know, the foreshadowing, but I think this is definitely the foundation of something we can continue to do and tell Roanoke to shove it. Well done. This is awesome. Let's keep doing it.
Thank you.
Dr. Wilder?
Yeah, appreciate your report. Appreciate the work that all you guys do, your team, everyone does to make our community better. One thing, it just really tucks the main effect of the quality of life. You know, I went to, obviously went to one of the bowl games recently and we looked to see what there is to do other than just the bowl game. And like when people come to Lynchburg for a game at Liberty or University of Lynchburg, they want to know other things to do. And so excitingly, something spectacular like this happening. I mean, a similar thing was like this in Dallas. I was like, wow, we got the same thing in Lynchburg. So I'm so happy to see Lynchburg continue to thrive, continue to move forward, continue to have that qualitative life that people desire. When you come into an institution for a visit, they can go downtown and visit one of these main attractions. So thank you for the work all you're doing and thank you for getting rid of some of those dilapidated storefronts that need to be renovated. We appreciate that. That to me is one of the greatest things we can do is make sure our downtown area looks better, looks more attractive. When people do come in, they can see these nice storefronts. So I appreciate all the work. And also want to make another comment about Liberty and how they've kind of revitalized the River Ridge Mall. We're just so glad for their investments. All those investments we're doing in our community, all those private investments, all those partners, it's really changed the landscape of our community and making our community more attractive when a place like Framatone are looking to relocate, they can see the great things happening in Lynchburg. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so yes, all that they said, it was beautiful, magical, Hallmarkey. Aside from the fact that I sang in front of a thousand people.
Five thousand.
Five thousand to stretch time and wait for Santa. But you know, you do what you have to do for the kids. That's what we do. But it was wonderful, so well done and I agree. More lights, more lights. We love the lights. Lights are magical. Everybody loves the lights. You're an awesome rock star as well on top of Marjette. I agree. You're, you're doing a great job and you work hard, awesome. So you are not just a cherry on top, you are a rock star dessert. So main course, awesome dessert. You guys work well together, so thank you. With that said, I have three words before you walk away. Return on investment. Right there. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
So now we're going to talk about energy storage ordinance. I'm so sorry, Rachel.
Come on, Rachel, bring us home, Rachel. You can do it. You too are a great dessert, Rachel.
Consider this my formal start of the petition to move the bibs up so that we can get the boring stuff out of the way.
No, Rachel, you are awesome as well.
I don't want to follow these things.
Okay, our energy storage decommissioning ordinance. This item will appear before council for action on January 23rd, 2024. Ms. Rachel Fretson.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This zoning ordinance amendment would affect energy storage facilities within our city. These uses are permitted by conditional use permit in all residential, all commercial, all institutional and our I-1 restricted industrial districts. They are permitted by right in the I-2 light industrial and I-3 heavy industrial districts. And we have worked with Mr. Friedman's office as well as outside council with experience in this realm to bring you this ordinance today. The amendment was initiated by staff to ensure that any energy storage project, such as a battery energy storage system or a solar facility, has an agreement in place to decommission all of the equipment associated with that facility if needed, when they are removed and disposed of properly if operations of the facility were to cease. The draft ordinance also requires a surety, which includes, ensures that the developer has the financial means to carry out that decommissioning if needed. The terms of the agreements would be determined on a project by project basis and would be approved by the city's attorney's office prior to execution. Planning Commission recommended approval of this ordinance amendment at their meeting on December 13th and this item should return for a council public hearing on January 23rd.
Okay, wonderful. Well, does anybody have questions, council missions, because you're so excited? Would you like to comment on this one?
Yeah. So, so just to be clear, what we're doing here is, is this, the one that we just approved over there, what was that road?
Ruzens.
It was down off of Ruzens Road, but it was a specific road. I can't. Is it, is it off Hydro? Is that where it is?
Harbor Street and.
Yeah, Harbor Street, that's what I was looking for. So, so that does not apply, this will not apply to that one that we already approved, correct?
It would actually because that was approved, the CUP was approved. However, the ordinance is written that this is a condition of site plan approval, which they have not submitted for site plan yet.
Got it. All right, that was one of the questions that I had about this. Because I think it's pretty important because that stuff is pretty hazardous, pretty toxic, pretty nasty stuff they use in those lithium batteries. And for us not to have that plan in place to be able to ensure that we're going to not turn, you know, Harbor Street, that's right next to a house, right? We don't want to turn that into a superfund site because we didn't think in advance to get rid of the hazmat before we, you know, before we take it on. So I think this is great. Appreciate you guys putting this together and keep it up.
Health, safety and welfare.
Thank you. And we know you do a very, you do actually have a very difficult job and you answer a lot of really hard questions.
We all have our roles.
Everybody does. You're all part of the team, so thank you. Thank you. You're an essential course as well, so we appreciate you. Everybody's important, yes. Okay, moving on to roll call. Dr. Wilder.
I don't have any particular events. I know there's a Martin Luther King breakfast on Monday. At the start of the African American history celebration month, so we love, love celebrating the diversity in our community. Looking forward to one of these speakers is from Lynchburg, I think he's a lawyer in Roanoke, I believe, but he's done amazing things in his, in his career. So looking forward to hearing him and all the other great events, the great speakers that are coming to our community. So I make sure we take advantage of that, just expand our varieties of our community and appreciate the culture of others. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman. Councilwoman Taylor?
No.
Vice Mayor Pearl.
I do have a few, so apologies. While back, we made some really important changes and adjustments to Enterprise Drive. I think it'd be prudent, since we've made those changes, to get a report back on how things are there. Speeding issues, pulled over, pulled, you know, reports of being pulled over, many accidents, just full gambit. I think it might be time, it's been maybe nine months by my math, so that'd be welcomed. I received a complaint, concern, it's, it, it was odd. The resident was having his home reassessed again and I'm not sure why that would happen outside of an assessment year and it just seemed very confusing. So if I could have, you know, a conversation with, with whoever you think is appropriate, that'd be welcomed there to find out some more. And the following comments are not directed at, at staff whatsoever. Over the holidays, we had a really kind of an evil thing happen in this city and, and these flyers continue to be distributed. And I know politically, economically, culturally, their city is fairly diverse, as we saw in the presentation earlier. And yet there's one thing I know for a fact is that pig needs to stop putting that crap out there. And I just felt it was necessary that it's said from this dais, that I think all of us can agree that that stuff needs to go and it needs to go now. And I really hope that our chief, our police and our comments attorney can find that guy and, and whatever laws can be held accountable to, to that person for thinking it's appropriate to share messages of that sort that it's dealt with and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Okay, tonight I will be highlighting the Department of Libraries. And I think it's important that we do that because as, as many of y'all know, literacy is one of my passions and I've been reading to the kids at our schools pretty much every month, which I have great fun doing. And right before the holidays, I was over at Paul Monroe in Christmas onesie, reading to the kids there. And I actually went to a business meeting in my Christmas onesie because I didn't have time to change out of it to get to the school. And so I was in a Christmas onesie in a business meeting and then reading to the kids because that's how important it is that we reach to the children. So libraries are important. Okay. The Lynchburg Public Library's mission is to provide the citizens of Lynchburg with access to print and multimedia materials and informational services to meet their informational, educational, recreational and cultural needs. A highly trained and caring staff of 31 employees strives to inform, enrich and empower every person in our community by creating and promoting a barrier free access to a vast array of ideas and information, including lifelong learning and a love of reading. They offer services through print and digital platforms, promote emerging library trends and provide innovative programs for citizens of all ages. The Lynchburg Public Library is a busy urban library environment, including a main library located at the plaza and a downtown branch located in City Hall. Over 195,000 people visited the library in fiscal year 2023. Library staff answered over 18,000 reference questions and recorded over 20,000 public internet computer sessions. Patrons frequent the library for a variety of needs, including reading and research material, computer access, free wifi and to attend library programs. The library circulated over 330,000 library materials in fiscal year 2023. 62,000 of these circulations were electronic materials. Library staff offered 361 total programs in fiscal year 23 that over 7,600 people attended. Programs include weekly storytimes for children ages birth to five, after school programs for students, family engagement events, author lectures, live animal presentations and a robust summer reading program for people of all ages. The Lynchburg Public Library is proud to partner with Lynchburg City Schools to provide a free lunch program to children ages 18 and under during the summer. Last summer, the library lunch site served 1,436 lunches to youth over the course of nine weeks. Okay, we're going to have a little history lesson real quick. On January 16th, 1786, Virginia's Act for Religious Freedom, written by Thomas Jefferson and guided through the legislative process by James Madison, both founding fathers of our country, was passed by the Virginia General Assembly. Virginia's Act for Religious Freedom provides in part that no man shall be compelled to frequent or support any religious worship place or ministry whatsoever, nor shall be enforced, restrained, molested or birthened in his body or goods, nor shall otherwise suffer on account of his religious opinions or belief, but that all men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinions in matters of religion. Next Tuesday, on January 16th, is obviously the anniversary of when this was first started, so I will be making a more formal acknowledgement of that date, but I wanted to let you know